Welcome to the May 27, 2021 Planning Commission Committee of the Whole Meeting. This committee provides an opportunity to have an in-depth conversation with items contained on the agenda. Items referred to the committee are usually deemed inconsistent with the 2030 comprehensive plan. The committee discussion is less formal as compared to the Planning Commission meeting, and there are generally no time limits for speakers. If any participants have issues with the technology, please send a message to the moderator. I would ask commissioners to hold all questions until the conclusion of all presentations and any public comments. Finally, please be recognized by the chairperson before speaking. Our only discussion item this afternoon is Z321. This is the first time this case has been discussed, so I would ask for a full staff presentation from Sarah Ellis.
Good afternoon, everyone. Just want to confirm you all can see my screen and you see rezoning Z321?
Yes, we see it there.
Okay. So this is a request to rezone a small piece of property, just it's .18 acres from Conservation Management to Residential 6. The Planning Commission deadline for action is July 26, 2021, and this is a general use case. Okay, so zoning in the area is a mixture of R4 and CM, and I am going to pause on this slide to explain a little bit of how we think that the CM designation arrived on the area. So you might have seen in the staff report that the 500-year floodplain does cover a portion of the property, and then right to the, right behind the 500-year floodplain, there is the 100-year floodplain, and then there is the Neuse River. So we did some research on when the zoning was mapped. It was mapped in 2001 as part of an ETJ extension, so it's when these parcels became part of Raleigh's planning jurisdiction, they're still in the county. And it appeared that they were mapped to sort of follow the 100-year floodplain boundary, but I would like to make a clear note that this parcel only has a portion of the property in the 500-year and a very, very small portion in the upper corner of the 100-year. So just wanted to make that note before I continued on. Okay, so just again showing more of the location of the site. It's located pretty close to the border of Knightdale. You can see the site is just a single parcel inside of a small, low-density residential community. Behind it is open space, and that's mostly because it's the Neuse River and it's floodplain. If you look a little bit further north, it's also low-density residential, and then to the south, there's some medium density residential as you get closer to the freeway. Just a zoomed-in look on the site so you could kind of get a better perspective. It's in a mostly developed, single-family residential cul-de-sac, and again, behind it is that open space because that's floodplain area and that's where the Neuse River is. So a couple of views looking into the site. You can see it's an undeveloped parcel, and there are some developed, single-family dwellings on either side of it, and it's the undeveloped parcel in the middle. Okay, so a summary of what is being requested. They are requesting to go from CM to R6. Currently in CM, that does not allow the construction of any sort of residential dwellings. You can do some small accessory structures, and that is it. So what the request would be is to build a single-family home, that's what could be built there. It would significantly reduce the setbacks, and I'll say the setbacks that I displayed for the CM zoning are generally applied to that accessory structure, but I think the intent there was a heavily forested area, so the setbacks would decrease if the request was approved to go to R6. Carbon emissions analysis, it does have lower walk score transit and all of these things because it's pretty far out, so it would not enhance access to transit should this request be approved. And again, the bus is pretty far away, it's a bit farther than one could walk down over on New Bern Avenue. As far as affordability is concerned, it does add to the housing supply, it does not include any subsidized units, it only would permit one type of housing, and it would allow smaller lot than citywide average, and as mentioned previously, it's not within walking distance of transit. So the request is inconsistent with the future land use map designation, which designates the site as public parks and open space, and that's generally following that CM zoning that we saw previously. There's no urban forend designation in the area. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan overall despite being inconsistent with the future land use map designation of public parks and open space. The consistent policies are conservation of single-family neighborhoods, as it would allow the same development type that currently exists on both sides of the parcel, infill compatibility for the same reason in zoning for housing as it would increase the amount of housing in the area by one unit. Inconsistent policies, again, it's inconsistent with the future land use map, it is inconsistent with the policy of zoning of annexed lands and location of growth. Those two are just generally saying that increased growth or new development should be located within already, within areas that are already inside of the city limits, so the property is in the ETJ, and that's why it triggered those inconsistent policies. There's no outstanding issues with the case. Again, I'll say it's a general use request, so we didn't see any conditions on this one. Deadline for action is July 26, 2021, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sarah. Now I'd like to hear from the applicant, Larry Watkins.
Larry, you're unmuted now. We had a sound check with Larry, spoke with him before the meeting started.
All right, let's give him a second, he might, if he's having some issues. Can you remind me, I did not see anyone signed up to speak on the case, but has that changed?
Yes, we do have one person signed up, and then he also informed us that two or three of his neighbors are also interested in speaking, and they would all like to use his device, and so that's at your discretion.
So while we work on getting Mr. Watkins, let's shift to a public comment.
Robert Allison, you are now unmuted.
Hello, how are you today?
Hello, thank you.
I'm actually on the board from homeowners. Cass is actually supposed to have been on this call also, which is the homeowners association over on the board here, and I live, joined it through the property. We had a few other people who wanted to speak, but during the time of day, they had to be at work, and one guy has to be, he's a disabled vet, and he has to be at the VA today. So I've got my other neighbor, he's also house up from me, he's affected also, he's sitting here next to him, he was also a board member, and we had lots of concerns because this actually was, I moved here, I was told nobody can actually build on there because it's part of a nature conserve, it's got a main water main going through that property underneath it. And it's, like I said, it's also in FEMA flood zone, and also with the Army National Corps of Engineers has it, actually has it marked off right there to tree lines. And I think it'd be a good idea, just like come out here and looked at it and actually looked at the size of this, because it's not as big as it looks on that map. It's pretty small, and when he's talking about a 2,000 square foot house on there, I don't know how he would even put that on there. And, because I was also been told he was wanting to put on stilts, and that's going to be against our covenant in the neighborhood anyway. I got a friend of mine, he's a state house inspector, come out and looked at, you know, the property, he was like, and he doesn't even realize, you know, how they would even put something on there. And me, myself, and neighbors have been taking care of that property for, I myself has been doing it for, what, six years?
Yeah, at least six years.
At least six years, and everybody else has been doing it for, taking care of it for about 15, 16 years, if not more. So it's basically, the cul-de-sac takes care of that area, and really opposed of, you know, anybody putting something on there, because it would just crowd out our houses also, but it's also, it would cause more flooding in my yard. I wish I could show you, but I got to use the phone, my laptop has a problem. I got a video, when it rains hard, of the water that actually spills over into my property goes down to the river over here, and I actually had to put a dirt pile over on the hill next to, can't really see it in that picture, but if you look to the right, it goes down. It's at a pretty good angle, almost, probably what, about 25-degree angle, straight down to my property. Actually had to put a, get dirt, put it there because so much of the drainage is coming off of that property. And I got Ray here, he knows more about this, he was also on the homeowners board. Yeah, unlike me, this is 4:00 AM to me, because I work third shift, and I really don't want the noise from the head either, but is it okay if Ray speaks?
Please go ahead, sir.
Yes, my name's Ray Novak, I live at 5613 Preston Place. I'm two doors up from Robert on his left. I've been living here 34 years, just about to this time this development was first put in. I bought one of the model homes, it's a three-bedroom ranch, it's on a little bit less than a quarter acre lot, and it takes up quite a bit of that lot. I do have a front and backyard, and when I looked at the cul-de-sac, of course, when I bought in here, I would, I didn't know at the time, they say that they would never build on it, but as time went on, I've seen probably a half a dozen people buy that lot and come to find out because it didn't meet setback requirements that they could not get a permit to build on it. So I thought it would always remain open, you know, as a vacant lot, and we, you know, we'd like to keep it that way, keep it natural. I'm against having a home put there if it's, number one, if it doesn't meet the setback requirement, and two, if it's going to be put on stilts, I think it's going to kind of pull our property values down. To put a home on that lot, the size that it is, would be very crowded. It just wouldn't fit into the design of our neighborhood, and that's why I'm against it. I can't say much more than that, but like I say, I've lived here 34 years, and there's never been a problem with any of it. I don't know how and why, when the builder, Yarwood, I think, was the builder contractor that built homes in here, he had bought that lot, he was, had a chance at one time to sell that lot, to split it up between the houses on each side, and both of the owners had agreed that they would, they would buy the lot, and if he would accept the price that they offered, but he turned them down. And ever since then, it seems like every few years, somebody comes in and buys the lot thinking they're going to build on it, it just doesn't happen. And I think it's kind of a mess, really. I think it ought to be left natural, it looks good, it keeps their homes spaced out like they should be, and it fits into the neighborhood like we think it should, you know, we like to keep it that way. We have Rodney, oh, Carlton here, he might want to have his input on it, but I thank you very much for the time, just to give my opinion.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the public using that same device want to continue speaking?
Yes, it's me, Rodney Carlton. I'm another one of the homeowners here in the cul-de-sac.
And you're on the board.
And I'm on the board.
And what are your comments, sir?
Well, I kind of sense that anything that pertains to that lot should be based on what was in here. When I moved here 22, 23 years ago, it was part of the natural preserve. The gentleman, Jim Yarwood, that owned my home prior, owned that lot, and I'm right here in the cul-de-sac, just like Mr. Novak and Mr. Allison. We're just in a position where we were never under the impression it would ever be used for anything other than being natural, because it was part of the natural preserve, or nature preserve, my fault. And it's kind of disheartening that you all are going in trying to change the format on it, where it's as though, for the last, what, 20 years, the last 16, 17 years at least, we've been having to maintain that lot. No one's coming in and cut the grass. We've had to cut two trees down this past year because of a storm that came through. And I mean, those are all issues that pertain to someone that owns something, but then all of a sudden, you're trying to come in to benefit from it? I mean, you know, we're keeping it cut, we're keeping it down because of the neighbors and the neighborhood. And if it's a natural preserve, great, but we'd heard nothing back from anyone. The management company here, we'd submitted information about trying to have whoever owns a lot to come in and maintain it. No one's done that. So for 20-plus years, we've been having to cut the grass when we cut our own. Again, you're talking about putting in a lot. You all realize how that's going to affect everybody in this neighborhood from the entrance to the cul-de-sac and vice versa? We only have a one-and-a-half lane frontage in this neighborhood, there's one way in and one way out. Materials and everything, and then once you come into the cul-de-sac, you're going to block up everybody here. It doesn't benefit any of us. Yes, so, I mean, I don't see where dealing with the Planning Commission in itself is going to really help any of this, because there's no reason why anybody should be building anything in here. This community is almost 30, almost 40 years old, and for the last 30?
I've been here 34 years.
Yeah, you've been 34, been here 23. It's like, you know, we, I guess we're all against it, simply because we know how it's going to affect us. It's not about him owning the property, because nobody's ever done anything with the property. And we wanted the impression nothing was going to ever be done with the property because of where it sits. It's been overgrown and neglected, and now all of a sudden Raleigh has no more land, and everybody wants to take a vacant lot and make it a piece they can sell. That was never the case for us.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Moderator, is there anybody else signed up to speak on this request?
Not from the public. The applicant, Larry Watkins, has logged back in, so we can check his sound now if you'd like.
All right, please, let's go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, we can.
All right. Good afternoon, I'm Larry Watkins. I purchased that lot roughly about two years ago with the intention, it was sold as a residential building lot from Remax Realty. I mean, I understand the homeowners' concerns about they've maintained it for 30 years, but my point is, if, when the for-sale sign went up, why didn't they buy? I mean, I'm sitting here paying property taxes on a piece of property that I cannot use. It was originally a residential building lot when the development was done back in late 80s, early 90s, and I'm just sitting here trying to build a two-story slab-on-grade, 1,700 to 1,800 square foot home that's affordable for a single family or single mother, starter home for kids out of college, just affordable housing that City Raleigh has been pushing for. And I just feel like that when the ETJ took it over, they just zoned it to CM, but it was originally a building lot, and I'm just trying to get it back to the setback so I could build an affordable home on it. I mean, we're just talking about one house in the neighborhood, it's not going to cause that much traffic to that area.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Does anybody have any questions for the staff or applicants at this point? Commissioner O'Haver?
I noticed that the other adjacent lots are also mapped into the CM district, so I guess I'm a little bit confused by that. So if anybody wants to come in and buy those lots and do anything beyond what's there now, that's also going to be disallowed, and should we not be looking at, I think, is this a larger situation here, I guess? I'm just, I got to figure that part out.
I'm happy to answer that, so that's a really good question. If you look at the zoning pattern for Preston Place for this cul-de-sac, a majority of the lots in that cul-de-sac, including some of the lots owned by the speakers today, are zone conservation management. And so conservation management is a zoning district that has allowed uses in it, just like any other zoning district. And conservation management allows essentially four uses: parks and open space, minor utilities, cemetery, and restricted agriculture. That's the list. So you get one of those four uses in that zoning district. The existing homes in Preston Place that have the conservation management zoning are all legal non-conforming, meaning they were built before the zoning was applied, the property was divided in the county back in the mid 80s, and then was brought into the ETJ and zoned with Raleigh zoning back in, I believe, 2001 as part of a very large rezoning and annexation into the city of Raleigh. At that time, the conservation management was intended to follow the floodplain. However, it appears that the conservation management zoning line was drawn much more broadly onto the properties on Preston Place. So Commissioner O'Haver, you raised a really good question, which is, you know, if any of these other property owners on Preston Place wanted to do something to their structure, the city would raise some questions about whether or not, in addition to an existing house or some new pavement outside, like a new patio or a new deck, would even be allowed in that zoning district?
So Chair Fox, if I could then, I mean, at least as of right now, until we continue the conversation, I'm fully in support of this rezoning, but I'm wondering if even for the benefit of the neighbors who have even called in, is there, is there another course of action we should be considering so that they don't deal with similar issues in the future? And I don't know the answer to that, so just throwing it out there, doesn't necessarily need a response, but that's my current thinking.
Thank you. Do any other commissioners have any questions or comments? While you're gathering thoughts, Travis, excuse me if you've said this already, what was the year that the lot was planted? Do we know that?
1986.
Thanks, David, that's correct.
Yeah, it was recorded, the subdivision was recorded in 1986. The property was brought into the city's ETJ, some 4,000-plus acres were brought into the ETJ in June of 2001, 20 years ago. And at that time, the conservation management zoning designation was laid over the, that portion of the cul-de-sac that you see in the map in the backup material, which basically rendered many of those homes legally non-conforming. And the only way to replace a home there would be to rezone it.
Thank you. I'm assuming as well, upon selling a house, you would be challenged to find someone who could get a mortgage for it based on the zoning of the underlying land. Commissioner Reins, I saw that you had a question?
Yeah, I think this is for staff. 500-year floodzone boundary, that cuts through significant part of the back part of the property, would that technically be off limits for any new construction? So I guess question, I just question if that is the case with all the setbacks, can a slab-on-grade house effectively be put there? And if so, should we consider conditions to deal with drainage or water from the new construction to the adjacent property owners if this, if this is granted?
And that's, that's a really good question. I'm happy to answer it, and maybe, Sarah, I think you had a map that showed the extent of the floodplain, it might be helpful to see that as I'm talking about it.
Sure.
All right, thank you. So there are two essentially extents of floodplain. There's the 100-year floodplain and the 500-year floodplain. There are no restrictions from a building standpoint in the 500-year floodplain. Currently, there are restrictions on what you can do in the 100-year floodplain. The current code says you're allowed to essentially fill 50% of the 100-year floodplain, so half of the area. However, you might remember, oh, thank you, Sarah, you might remember a recent text change that was processed that would, that would restrict development within the 100-year floodplain. Planning Commission recently voted on that. The city council adopted the ordinance, and it will become effective in the spring of next year. And the reason for the delay is so that we can get a little bit more time and space between effectiveness of the ordinance and the production of some new floodplain maps that are being generated through FEMA. So FEMA produces what's known as a FIRM map, F-I-R-M, and it identifies the extent of the floodway in the city, which is the water course, the floodplain, 100-year and 500-year. So we should know when those new FIRM maps are released, the new extent of the 100 and 500, 500-year floodplain. However, just more directly to Commissioner Reins' question, there is no restriction in the 500-year floodplain. So looking at this map here that Sarah's pulled up for us, you've got two colors of, or shades of pink, one is a bit more purple. Oh, that's perfect, thank you. So the purple shade is the 500-year floodplain, and the pink is the 100-year floodplain. So you can see that this property has very little 100-year floodplain contained on it. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
Do we have any additional questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you, Chair Fox. I guess I'm just struggling with this one in sheer terms of fairness. I mean, it feels odd to have this one parcel zoned differently from the rest of the cul-de-sac. I mean, on the other hand, it, and I don't fundamentally have an issue with it if the property owner is able to put a structure there, and it's not in the 100-year floodplain. Um, I don't know, it just, it just, it seems like the whole cul-de-sac should be rezoned residential and not just this one parcel. I know we don't have the power to make that happen, but it just seems weird that we'll have this one parcel zoned residential, and the rest of it is going to be CM. So that's the struggle I'm having.
Commissioner O'Haver?
Yeah, I mean, Commissioner Bennett, that's sort of the same, same lines that I have, you know, we're starting on, and so I guess the question with staff is, is there, is there a larger move here to deal with this issue? I don't know, because similarly, I feel like even some of the folks on the call probably are being, or could be, or will be hamstrung by this zoning for CM, which appears that it was just sort of following the 500-year floodplain, which might not have been intentional. So I don't know if there's a larger sort of move here to deal with exactly what Commissioner Bennett mentioned.
To tag on to that question, would one potential path be addressing this particular zoning case but making a recommendation to the city council that there's a city-initiated rezoning for the remainder of the cul-de-sac?
So that certainly is a path forward that's available to the commission. Obviously, you need to act on the request that's in front of you today, but understand the challenge here, just dealing with the one singular parcel when you've got a larger problem in the immediate vicinity. And it's certainly a recommendation that you could send to the city council, that the city entertain or explore a city-initiated rezoning for the rest of the properties on this cul-de-sac that are zone conservation management.
Did I see any additional hands while we were speaking? Commissioner O'Haver?
Sorry, I mean, if you just look at the staff, I mean, I can pull up the IMATS, but if you just look at the staff presentation just to the north off of Torness Court, there's three or four more lots, or I guess probably three lots that are, that are in similar, in a very similar situation. So again, I, I mean, I'm comfortable dealing with this particular case in front of So again, I, I mean, I'm comfortable dealing with this particular case in front of us. But as with Ms. Bennett, I've got no issue with it, but I do feel like there's something beyond this specific case that perhaps we should address or at least bring to the forefront.
Commissioner Bennett?
And did the property owner say he bought it two years ago as a lot that he could build on?
Would you like to hear a response from the applicant?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Yes, I bought it two years ago. It was listed with Remax Realty as a residential building lot.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So it sounds like that was, it shouldn't have been listed as a residential building lot if it's zone CM.
It appears it was platted correctly as a residential lot in 86.
Right.
And, and this change to CM might have been a mapping error. That's the information I'm getting from it. Is it the, the commission to move forward with this one, but signal to the council that there's, we've, we've discovered a larger issue? I'm seeing some thumbs up. And with that, I would entertain a motion. Commissioner O'Haver?
No, I'll let Ms. McIntosh, because I'm clicking a bunch of my PDFs here to try to get stuff up. She looked like she was ready, so go ahead.
Oh, I'm not ready, I was just going to volunteer.
I'll let you go for it.
I move to approve case Z321, 5601 Preston Place. The, it's in the public interest and in comply, and, I'm sorry. In agreement with the comprehensive plan and compatible with existing development in the neighborhood, we also recommend the city council consider looking at zoning of adjacent and nearby existing homes to potentially change zoning from CM to a residential zoning.
And Commissioner O'Haver?
I'd like to second and thank Ms. McIntosh for working through that one for me. Thank you.
And I believe, since this is not the final disposition, we can vote by show of hands.
Yes.
Yep, so those in favor of the motion to approve Z321 with the subsequent information going to council, those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? No, that motion passes unanimously. Okay, and I believe that those are the only discussion items for our agenda today. That would conclude this meeting of the Committee of the Whole, unless there is any additional question or comment from commissioners or staff. Seeing none, you everybody.
Have a great holiday weekend.